Okay. At this time, I would like to call to order the February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five meeting of the Hartford Joint One School District Board of Education. We could have a roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Present.
I'm here. Thank you. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the district's business, and it is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Any district resident or parent of a currently enrolled student wishing to speak should have filled out a card located on the sign-in table and given to our board secretary. Are there any of those tonight? Okay, thank you. Our next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. So, Mr. Hamlin, you would please introduce your students. We're gonna lead us in the pledge.
Thank you very much. Yes, see, we had a couple of students who were not able to join us, so we had Lily and the person who can take care of the place this evening. Smallner is here as well, and I have five at Lincoln Room for this evening, unfortunately, the energy that couldn't make it, so we'll be moving this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, you can come up and shake all of our hands now. That was excellent. Thank you very much. Our next item is to consider approval of the agenda. The agenda notes in our, the agenda notes the board's mission of we will support our community through dedicated governance, leadership, and stewardship so that our students achieve. It also states our values and expectations as the board in governing our meetings. The purpose of the agenda approval is twofold. The first reason is to verify that public notice has been given according to state statute nineteen twenty eight four. This is Hoffman. Has the meeting been properly noticed?
Yeah.
Thank you. The second reason for approval of the agenda is to consider tailoring an item or to rearrange the order of events. Was there anything that a board member wanted to rearrange?
Yeah, um, for the policies down here. For twenty-two sixty-four and twenty-two sixty-six, number three, under disk of business.
Yep.
I would like to vote on those separately.
Okay. There's, can you make a motion that's that sexy?
Oh, yeah, I will make a motion to vote on twenty-two sixty-four and twenty-two sixty-six separately.
Is there a second? Don has seconded. All in, is it a roll call or a moment later? Roll call, please. Barb?
Hi.
Dom?
Hi.
Erin?
Nate.
Louise?
Nate.
So, it is tied at two-two, which means that the motion as presented did not carry. Is there an alternative motion that is being, that anyone would like to offer to move forward?
If I could think of one, I would say it, but I don't know of one, so.
All right, well, then at this time, we're gonna, I'm looking for a motion then to approve the agenda as it stands.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as it stands.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion here. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is the presentation of student excellence, which will be here given to us tonight by Lincoln Elementary School. So again, I'm gonna pass it back over to Mr. Hamlin.
Thank you very much. Yes, see, we're very proud of our students for their point and that's another two teachers that are here with some of their students. Keep your head in, and we will be presenting and talking about some of their literacy work that they've done in good grade. So at this stage, I will hand it over to Mrs. Foote and Mrs. Benson to introduce the board of the students.
My name's Cooper Braun. Good evening, school board members and Hartford Joint One administrators. Tonight, fifth graders of Lincoln are here to share about a writing project we all did this past fall. My name is Cooper Braun, and I enjoyed doing the Dark and Stormy Night books because we got to follow along with mystery writing. It allowed us through a step-by-step process that made my story so much better. I also enjoyed doing the Dark and Stormy Night books because I got to write a completely fictional story that used my imagination. My final reason that I enjoyed the Dark and Stormy Night book, books was because it made me such a better writer by helping me, helping to make my stories longer and teaching me that even when I'm done, I can still add detail. My final draft was so good that I decided to submit my book to the DRKG State Writing Competition. That is why I enjoyed the Dark and Stormy Night books. Here's how Miss Benson's class book turned out. You wanna hear part of my story?
Yes.
Maybe this isn't such a good idea, Jake said. No, we have to, said Mike strongly as he picked up a flashlight and flicked it on. Fine, replied Jake gloomingly. Let's keep going. Once Jake and Mike reached the door, Mike put his hand on the doorknob and said, you ready to find out who this is? Yes, replied Jake eagerly. Okay, said Mike as he twisted the doorknob, and it was the pizza man. Both Mike and Jake felt a sense of relief when they saw that it was just the pizza guy.
Hi, my name is Maddie Butch, and I will be talking about the fifth grade Dark and Stormy Night writing project. Our Dark and Stormy Night project was a narrative writing assignment. It started by us being asked to draw what we thought of when we heard Dark and Stormy Night. Then, once we were finished with our drawings, we were told to write a flash draft about the things in the drawing, which is just a quick writing to get the ideas flowing. After that, we turned the flash draft into a fifth-grade level story. The next thing we did was edit the story. During the process, we checked our spelling, grammar, and punctuation. After that, it was time to start the publishing process. The publishing process had two steps, typing and drawing. The typing was just putting our stories on the computer so that our teacher could send it to the publisher. But the next part was different. We only had one try because there's only so much of the special printing paper. Lastly, after that, we sent everything to the publisher.
Hello, good evening. My name is Evelyn Rumler. I'm from Miss Foote's class. I'm here to talk about our Dark and Stormy Night books and the process in making it. So it all started out with a drawing. In art, we all had to draw a picture of what a dark and stormy night would look like to us. I drew an old house with two awake and frightened girls, fast-as-sleep parents, and many ghosts. Then, in writing, we all wrote about our main character and what he or she would look like, like, dislike, and what would be in their bag. Then, we planned out our story on a story map, and when we were done, we wrote a rough drafts. It took about a week, and finally, when we were finished, we wrote our final copies. I loved writing my story and how we all put the stories together to make our own book. Plus, I drew the cover page on the book. I drew it again in a heartbeat. Here is the book. Now that you've heard the process, I'm gonna read you a little bit of my story. She stealthily stepped into the house, into the hall. As she turned the corner, she nearly jumped out of her skin. Ella, why are there ghosts all around the house? Ella's sister Jenny asked, shaking. It's okay, Jenny, Ella said reassuringly. I'm gonna stop them. I even have a plan, but I need your help, so come here and I'll tell you my plan. As Jenny came over, Ella bent down and whispered her plan into Jenny's ear.
Hello, I'm Elliot, and I'm a fifth grader at Lincoln Elementary in Miss Green's class. Earlier in the school year, Miss Green told us that we would be writing short stories with the writing prompt A Dark and Stormy Night. It all started with us finding the problem, solution, and the main character's details of the story. Once we were finished with that, it was time for us to start writing our first drafts. It took many drafts to accomplish the story we wanted. Once we were finished with the writing process, it was time for us to create an illustration that would bring our stories to life. Once the illustrations and writing was finished, it was time for Miss Green to send our writing to the publisher. Two months later, we received our, we received our book back. It was amazing to see our stories in a published book. One thing that made it even more interesting was the fact that even though we all had the same prompt, each story was different between me and my classmates. Not only did this project have us work on our writing skills, but also gave us the opportunity to be creative. I feel that this was a great opportunity for me and my classmates to express our feelings through writing and through drawing. I hope that I will get to publish a book again in the future. Now I will be sharing a small portion of my very own story. After several minutes of looking around and using radars, we finally spotted it. I grabbed out my camera because after looking at how powerful the winds were, we knew that it was going to be a big storm. Oh no, the winds are getting a little strong, I mentioned, and so I actually looked away from my camera. The tornado was probably three hundred to three hundred and fifty yards away. Guys, whatever you do, don't look up and just go right to the truck as fast as you can, I screamed. What do you mean, they all said nervously, the tornado, I said in a scared tone. I watched them as they look up, and both Josh and Blake bolted to the truck. Emma and I just stood there. I didn't know if it was from being scared or from being amazed. We look at, we looked at the tornado. It must have been only two hundred and forty feet away. Then we ran as fast as we could to get by, by a ditch. We all started freaking out. We didn't know what was gonna happen next.
You guys, are there any questions for the students before we shake hands?
I don't have questions. I just have a comment. Obviously, with my daughter going through it last year, I love the book. I think it's so awesome that you guys will have a memory that you will have for your money's sake, and it's, it's awesome.
So, parents, you are allowed to stay for as much of the board meeting as you would like. Typically, families do leave after this. However, we do have a special recognition coming up in just a little bit, and so we would love it if you would stay as we honor one of our board members before you leave. And of course, the board meeting is open, so you can remain the whole time. We also know it's a school night. Thank you. There is no citizens delegation to be heard tonight, so we're skipping number five. And that brings it to my report for the evening. And tonight, I really just wanna focus on one thing, which is recognizing someone who has given years of service to this district, both as an employee of the district for, I'm not gonna remember how many years, more than thirty years, and more than forty years, thank you, and then has served the board here with us for the last four. So the majority of the time I have been on the board, I've been, had the honor to serve with Mr. Ed Venky, who through a rule will not, no longer be able to be on our board, but he has come with a history of perspective and experience in this district that is hard to find. His shoes are ginormous, Phil, and he will be greatly missed by me personally and here as sitting on this board. So I just wanna congratulate Ed and wish him all the best in his next endeavors.
Good job.
We're gonna take a picture, Don and Barb. Just trying to have you guys come around. Before we do the picture, can we, can we present Ed with some things?
Yeah.
Some goodies. So first, Erin has the WASB Certificate of Recognition, recognizing you for your years of service on the school board. And we have an award in here for you, along with your name badge in case you still want to pretend like you're on the phone, you said. This is on your kitchen table at home when you wanna take Harvard to Grand Rapids or something. This month, we are celebrating fabulous February, doing different fun things for our staff teams throughout the month. And so we have a little goodie bag for you. It spells out our theme for the year, which is light. As a school district, our goal is to illuminate the path and ignite the future for our students, and our staff are doing that. So we have that theme along with some cards.
Okay.
So I'll, I won't make you hold them right now. And then to celebrate, we also have cake. So we wanted to make sure that we were as awkward on video as possible, so we do have cake for everyone. Board members, there's cake for you too. But if we could take a brief intermission to grab some cake and celebrate Ed, if you'd like to shake him the other hand, and then we'll commence the rest of the board meeting, and I'll put these over in your spot.
Can you explain a little bit more of the canvassing, like?
Yes.
How long will it fit?
Yeah, I think we're on feed right now, so I'll explain it at the end of the video.
Absolutely.
Very nice.
I'll take a piece. Here we go.
You know, it's a t-shirt. I feel like you're gonna be cool. Did it go off? I can't turn it so you can't see it.
I should probably delay my presentation too. At least you're not writing.
Yeah, I don't know what their cost is. My competition. All right, before we jump back into business, I just want one more time, say thank you to Ed for his many years of service to this district, and we support you. We, we, thank you very much, Ed. Thank you. If you haven't had cake, that means you have to have two pieces before you go, so that's what's happening. Okay. The next item on our agenda here is the district administrative report, so I'm gonna pass it over to Dr. Viallo for that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Welk. The very first thing actually relates to our recognition of Ed and his service. Obviously, his department creates a board vacancy. The timing is a little confusing because we are so close to being adjacent to the current election that's going on, but the timeline is a little bit different. So according to policy zero-one-four-two-point-five, we do have sixty days to find a new board member. At that point in time, if the school board has not made a decision on who the next board member will be, then it is determined by the school board president. However, Ed and I have been in communication. We have a school board posting ready to go. Ms. Hoffman has included that in your packet, so you can see that. We did not want you to see it in the newspaper first. We wanted you to hear about it from us, so that will be sent to the newspaper tomorrow, and my guess is that it will be published by the end of the week. We will also have it on our website, and we will be accepting applications for prospective board members through March twentieth. The reason that we set that date is that statutorily, there is no timeline for a situation like this, except that it's within the sixty days. So we have it set to the Thursday before spring break, so that way we have, we're certain to have people on staff here in the office to support any potential candidates, answer any questions, and then when we return from break, we will have candidate interviews and a potential action by the current school board on making a decision on who that fifth board member will be, and that will be on April seventh. So March twentieth for applications, April seventh for the candidate interviews, and that is the vacancy created by Ed. The other timeline that we have is the regular school board election, where we have two candidates running for a single seat. We will have a forum for that, and that is on March eleventh at seven PM at Central Middle School. Then, the actual election is on April first. I'm very excited because much like last year, we have our graduates assisting us with the forum. And so we have three graduates of Hartford Joint One who are current high school students that I will be meeting with on Friday to review the candidate forum and what their roles will be. So excited about that. The other thing that I wanted to share was, a couple of weeks ago now already, Ms. Linder and I were able to attend the legislative breakfast in C S six, and we were able to communicate with some legislators. While we were up there, we were talking about four specific bills. One is on the school report card and the standards that go along with that. One is on devices. One, and when I say devices, that's cell phones or lack thereof in schools. Another one is a cursive bill, and then the last one is actually Bill twenty-twenty-five. I'm sorry, it's a different name, but it is about spending seventy percent of our budget specifically towards staffing. So those are four bills that are out early right now. They are making their way through the assembly. So I just wanted you to be aware that we're monitoring these, and the administrative team and I have been talking about them. Moving on to district updates, very excited, since the board had adopted moving four K back to our own buildings for next year. We have a beautiful enrollment poster for our four K students with huge posters, our postings at each of our buildings. So I've included that information for you, and then I also included information on our Friday membership report for second January, so I just wanted to make sure that you saw that. The last thing that I wanted to share as part of my report is, last week Wednesday, we had our continuous improvement session with Damian La Croix, and we had about sixty-ish people total. Some of that included staff members, some of that included board members, and then the rest were constituents. And so Damian has crafted a summary document for us. And then today, we met with the staff to repeat the same activities, so Damian and I will be meeting next week or so to review that, and then I'll bring an update to the board. But we got a lot of feedback from the first session, a lot of feedback from today, and I'm looking forward to bringing that back to the school board, and then to the administrative team, and then to the staff, so that way we can help develop those new school board goals that will guide the school district for the next set of years, along with the key performance indicators that underlie those goals. So with that, I'll turn it back to Ms. Welk for our discussion items.
Perfect. Thank you. Sorry, can I just bring up one thing? Along with that, as board members, you guys should know that you should be getting things from WASB, and the one thing that they are doing right now because of what's going on at the state is there is capital chats every Friday on WSAV. If, you don't have to have an account to watch it or learn about it, but when you click on them every Friday, they give updates on what's going on in the legislation right now. So they'll be doing that until the budget's approved. So that's really good information to, yeah, just wanted you guys to know that that's available for you. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the, the discussion portion of our meeting. The first item is just something I wanted to present to the board. It's an idea that kind of came up in a conversation Dr. Viallo and I were having, which was currently the presentation of student excellence happens at the very beginning of our meeting. And the thought I had was, should it get moved to a little bit later in the meeting so that Dr. Viallo could get her report first? The reason or the thinking behind it was that the parents who were all here listening now have left and didn't get to hear any of the great things. I mean, last month, we talked about, we had really great things that she reported back on and brought to us. And I fully understand as a parent that you might not wanna stay for all of the action and the whole meeting, but I was curious as to maybe they would wanna stay to hear a little bit about the president's report, the district administrative, administrative support, just so we could share more of the good news out. So it's an idea. It's not something that is urgent by any means. It was just a way to have our community members and parents hear a little bit more about what's going on in the district while they're here within our, within our little community here. If there's thoughts, we could certainly chat for a minute. If not, you can think about it, and we can talk about it later.
The other thing I would add is that if it were to be part of the discussion moving forward, whether that means this school year or next school year, oftentimes, the school board members will have oftentimes, the school board members will have questions for the students who've just presented, and it becomes more of a discussion than a presentation. So moving it to discussion could make more sense, doesn't always happen, but it's a possibility.
Next item up here is our spotlight on learning with Danielle Dickey. The district has been working with Dr. Dickey since April of twenty twenty-four. He specifically has been working with Central Middle School on literacy and vocabulary concepts. And the middle school team had an opportunity to work with him virtually and on-site in both large group and lab classroom settings. And so we have the Central Middle School leadership team to share some highlights of their work together and what the next steps are, so Dr. Riegatska, I pass it over to you.
Thank you, I'm joined here by Amber Elliott, who's a seventh grade ELA teacher at Central, and Amber too, and Amanda Christopherson, who is a seventh grade special ed teacher. So they're gonna share some exciting things and do a little demonstration in seconds after a quick little overview. Oh, there we go. Okay. So Dr. Dickey, we started working with him in April of last year, which gave us a nice head start for this year. He has four high-impact instructional practices, the first one is performance-based objectives. The second one is really bringing students up to the text and working on vocabulary. The third one is gradual release of responsibility, so we've done the first three already, and then in March, we'll work out practice four, which is writing essentially. What it has looked like in our building is that we've done some work with him as a whole group. We've also done content-specific sessions with him, so it's like just for ELA people, just for math, just for AFA. He's come into the building and done model lessons. He's going to come in again, he was gonna come in when we had that big snowstorm, so his plane couldn't get here, so he'll be back in April for another one. And he's also done classroom visits to give teachers feedback and to us a overall view of how he feels like we're implementing things, which is really awesome. Twice a month, I meet with all of our teams to dive a little bit deeper into the work that he's doing with us. I've given teachers feedback on their performance-based objectives. Mike Flynn, our instructional coach, has been working with people on implementing some of his strategies. And the special ed team, along with Alex and I, have been going to season six to do some structured literacy PD. And it's totally aligned with the work that we're doing with Dr. Dickey, so we've been bringing that back to staff too. Just been a really nice culmination of getting everything really aligned and really digging into literacy practices. One of our most favorite parts, right Mrs. Brandt, is working on universal literacy, having definitions, so we do flashcards every time we work together as a staff on having the same definitions for universal literacy terms, like this one summarized, which is a brief statement. So everybody has the same definition that they're using with students. And then what this looks like in the classroom, if you've been around Central recently, you've seen a bunch of posters in every single classroom. So when I say we're doing this as a school, like every single person is doing this, we've also worked with support staff on doing some of the strategies the students that they're working with as well. And every kid has their own copies of these, several copies, depending on what classes they're in. You will see different things around the building where people are really digging into, this one happens to be in a science classroom. They're doing it again in every single content area, really helping kids dig into reading and understanding the words. And again, understanding and having the same definitions, this is also in a science classroom, but you'll see they're using words like clean, evaluate, key details, everyone's using the same definitions. And now I'm gonna turn it over to demonstration lesson.
Thank you, so as Dr. Riegatska said, we, the first thing with Dr. Dickey was the PBOs, which are performance-based objectives, which are very similar to learning targets, probably a more common term than most of us have heard. So I'm going to run the board through what we normally do with students. So they're getting a sheet that kind of has three columns, so it's word, first thoughts, and the definition, so up here is this PBO that I put together really quickly for this presentation. So students will be able to identify academic vocabulary in order to determine meaning of text. Now, all of the PBOs and all the classrooms that you see start with students will be able to, if you come around to Central, you will notice SWABT or SWABAT. We abbreviated that just to kind of take out some of the words, and then it also has the in order to, or you might see as IOT. So every single one of the PBOs and all the classrooms start with this. So about, depending on the unit, I would say two to three times per unit, we have a new PBO, and we go through it with students every single time, and making sure that they are understanding what they're going to be doing coming up. So what I start with is I put it up there just like this, and I say, are there any words up there that either you might struggle with, or do you think a classmate might struggle with? Am I adding the classmate part, it kind of takes away a lot of the stress, you get a lot more volunteers, because they're not like, well, I don't know what this word is. They could be like, well, my classmates probably don't know what this word is. So are there any words up there that you think yourself might struggle with, or a classmate might struggle with? This is the participation part.
Maybe academic might be challenging for some people.
Okay, academic, any other ones? Identify, determine, determine. So I would say those are probably the three top ones, maybe vocabulary, that we've probably heard of before. So the first one that we actually have is identify, so you can write that down in your first word box on the top left. And then next, in that second column, and have you write down what you think identify means. When I first say identify, what do you think that means? What is identify, what's the definition that first comes to your mind? I'll give you about thirty seconds for this, I'll try and make this fast, not to take too long. Would anyone like to share what they think identify might mean?
Share, I wrote down name the thing.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Any other thoughts on what identify might mean?
Say what it is.
Saying what it is, sure. Any other thoughts?
Point out. Point out.
Point out, perfect. So what the definition that we have for this academic vocabulary is? No, it's not working. Whoops, too far. Whoops. Oh, I gave away our second word, to recognize a name. So that is the definition that we use across all of our classrooms for identify, is there recognizing and naming, which is very similar to what you guys said, just in a little different words, point out, sorry, what did you say again? Name the thing, so you're pointing out, you're recognizing it, and you're naming it, so that's our first word that we have. Our second word we have up there is determine, so I'll be jot down determine in your second box. And again, I'll give you about thirty seconds to write down what you think determine might mean. Now, this one might be a little bit trickier to really put a definition to determine, because you probably think, well, you're just determining something, so any thoughts what determine might mean?
Well, I have deduce, but then some people will say, hey, what does that mean?
Yeah, sure, deduce, that's what you know it means, that's what helpsful to you. Any other thoughts?
Find out.
Find out, perfect. Investigate, so determine, oh, sorry, go ahead. Choose, perfect, so determine is to figure out. Again, that is the definition, it looks like some of our ladies over here may have figured that out. Determine is the word that we, or the definition we use to figure out across our build, or across all of our classrooms. So this is just a quick little example of what we do. I try to pick some of our shorter academic vocabulary, some of them do get really involved, like the one on my board right now is synthesized. And that's a very difficult one for anybody, but especially middle schoolers and seventh graders, so we're really digging into what does it mean? We kind of go back to the post of the Dr. Riegatska showed us with the root words, prefixes and suffixes, and really breaking down these words for students, and they're able to apply that. And this is just a picture that I have of my vocabulary we go through every day. So all of the pink is out, it's just the brown or black parts when we first start. And the students look up all of the words for our vocabulary, and we break it down, we break it down by syllables, break it down into prefixes, suffixes, and root words. We kind of think about what we think it might mean, we get actual definition. We also look for synonyms, and we talk about how synonyms can often help us with the definition, sometimes definition can be a little difficult to figure out as well. We put the word into a sentence, and then we also identify part of speech.
Up here is just an example of something I've done with students. We've created a sheet, so every time that we do a new book in our small group, I have them go through and find a word that they might not know how to say or define. And then they're looking at the words to see if there's any prefixes or suffixes in that word. Then I have them look up the definition and see if it makes sense in that book, so just kind of taking what they're doing in every single class and applying it to my small group as well. It's kind of hard to read that writing, but the kids see it in every classroom, and they're really making the connections with the posters and what we're having them do. So it's been really nice to see it across the universal setting for them. Any questions?
Questions?
So I didn't think it would be used in science, it makes total sense, that is, there's probably a lot of words with many prefixes and suffixes in science. Is it also in math, are we using this in?
We're using it every single classroom, art, FIED, everything, yeah.
And even kind of go back to this original sheet, I have students
who we've been doing the vocab for three months now, and just yesterday and today, I have a student who's like, well, I think this might be a prefix or a root word, and he looks it up on his own, it's not on this list, this is not an all-encompassing list, but they're starting to like recognize and notice, like this is something I see over and over and over again, and I can kind of pick out, I think this might be something, even though it's not on the sheet provided to me.
This is a fun little exercise, are there any other questions, comments?
I just wanted to share, one, thank you, because I love seeing this actually be in action. And two, you asked who is using this, and our tech ed teacher came up to me a couple of months ago to talk about how he was using it with his students. So it truly is something that Dr. Riegatska and her team have embedded within the culture over at Central, so.
I would have to say of getting back to the basics.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, super thank you, thank you very much.
I feel like the audience have had to leave that a pop, just for fun. Especially if you didn't eat cakes, I'm just kidding. Item number three in our discussion is the achievement gap reduction, or AGR mid-year report. The achievement growth reduction grant uses data to determine the progress in reading and math of kindergarten through third-grade students. This is reported at the mid and end of the year, is that going to be you or Ms. Malter?
I'm going to be turning it over to Ms. Malter.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. So just as a reminder, this report really serves as a snapshot of student performance in both math and reading. And certainly provides with some valuable information, yet as we know, is not the only indicator of success and opportunities, but it does give us a nice snapshot. The particular snapshot that's in front of you shows student performance in both math according to number corner and reading according to two assessments, the benchmark level assessment and the benchmark subtest. In your board packet, you'll see Lincoln Elementary School is highlighted in blue, Rossman is in red, but I'm gonna speak to only the district purple today. And we'll start with math. For the math assessment, it's important to note that the assessment is measuring current standards taught, so it's not directly correlated to the baseline, and so I gave that reminder last year at this time, it's best not to compare the two, but instead to look at the percentage as an indicator of student mastery of the currently taught standards from that level assessment. So if you look at kindergarten, you'll see kindergarten students who met grade-level expectations or standards according to that assessment, fifty-two percent, which is an increase from where we were last year. In first grade, fifty-eight percent, also an increase. Second grade, sixty-seven percent, also an increase, and third grade, sixty-three percent. Something else that is important to know, the number corner assessment really serves, or not the assessment, but number corner itself as a component, component in mathematics has multi-purposes to it, so it does provide a spiral review, giving students an opportunity to practice those concepts if they haven't mastered it yet at this point, as well as brunt mode for future skills that are going to be taught during mathematics. So you'll see that, we're excited to continue to monitor those assessments. You'll hear back from me in May with the end of the year report, which will give us some more comparative data with number corner. For reading, a few items to consider when viewing that data, we are looking at the percent of students who have met end-of-year expectations, so that's different from how we do the mathematics. So these subtests are the same assessment taught in fall, as well as mid-year, unlike the math. So they can, they are similar in nature, and it can certainly be, give you a better perspective of the role. Let's take a look at kindergarten, you take a look at kindergarten, kindergarten reading, according to the benchmark finance subtest, you'll see an increase in student proficiency from baseline to mid-year on all four subtests. That includes rhyme awareness, beginning sound awareness, blending, and segmenting. Your board packet shows you the specific percentages, rhyme awareness sixty-four, beginning sound sixty-three, blending seventy-eight, and segmenting seventy-two. So really exciting. Although the FNP or the benchmark level assessment does not assess at sort of kindergarten, you'll see that fifteen percent of students have shown end-of-year proficiency so far, and they will again be assessed in spring. And that was an increase in first grade from five to twenty-one percent. The subtest in first grade, also an increase with deleting sounds, take a look at that one, actually showing you eighty-five percent of students master that skill, which is the critical that we have here. So you can see that confidently at mid-years, very exciting. In second grade, again, an increase when you look at the subtests in all five areas, as well as the FNP benchmark. That includes a really exciting jump on adding sounds as well, from fifty-five percent in fall to seventy-two percent in the year. In third grade, also shows you a very exciting jump in adding sounds, from seventy-six to eighty-nine. And in third grade, all subtests also increased. And four of five of those subtests are showing us percentile for the end-of-year goal, which is a huge celebration. The benchmark level assessment in third grade was an increase from twenty-two percent to thirty-nine percent. And you can see, just from the snapshots, a really incredible win, and some progress with reading specifically fine. As I mentioned at the start, this is really a snapshot, but it is helpful for our strategic planning. It's helpful as we continue to reflect, as we celebrate, and give monitoring, get prepared for, for our spring assessment. So you'll hear back from me on that sometime in May.
Wonderful, any questions for Ms. Malter? Thank you very much. Our next item here for the session is policy administrative guidelines. The guidelines have been updated to reflect the change in policies, do you have anything else to add to that?
Yes, I do, so this is listed both here in our discussion and as well as being listed as an action item. And so I wanted to clarify why that is the case. So policies must be approved by the school board, so policy twenty-two sixty-four and twenty-two sixty-six must be voted on by the board. However, these are the administrative guidelines that correspond, it's essentially the how-to or the playbook. And so those do not need to be approved by the board, they simply need to be reported to the board. So I'm here today to inform everyone, much like in the summer when we voted on these two policies previously, and I talked about endorsing or supporting the law for our own school board laws, that now we are seeing a different change of events or turn of events, so the US The U S, uh, Department of Ed issued a Dear Colleague Letter very recently. And what that did was it indicated that OCR, which is the Office of Civil Rights. Would now be enforcing Title Nine under the provision of the twenty-twenty Title Nine regulations and rules. Rather than the twenty-twenty-four rules and regulations which were approved, um, last summer. And so what that means for us is that we should be reverting our policies to what they were pre-August first. Which for us was being voted on in July. Um, that's when I brought it to you. So according to this, um, I will be rescinding the guideline. That supports policy twenty-two sixty-four because I'm recommending to you later this evening to rescind policy twenty-two sixty-four. And then I'm also planning on recommending that you revert to policy twenty-two sixty-six. Which was our previously existing Title Nine policy. It's the non-discrimination policy. Um, with the only change being that it reverts to the language. Prior to you made the change in July last school year. Uh, which goes back to the twenty-twenty adoption when it was first implemented. And so what that does is it removes the date. That refers to things occurring either before August first twenty-twenty-four or after August first twenty-twenty-four. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. Uh, either now if it relates to the guidelines or later on if it relates to the policies. Or either time if it's a general question about Title Nine or a non-discrimination.
We will have time to specify them as well.
Yes.
Um, item number five is the administrative report building in Brown's update. Mr. Carroll, would you provide a brief overview of updates for us?
Well, normally at this time of the year, I'm gathering prices and set schedules to, uh. Complete all the summer projects that we do with, because of the referendum and so it means that these guys are doing that project, project list is pretty small. One of the projects that we are still doing is, uh, we've been installing bleachers at Rossman School. Uh, they're set to be removed the middle of July with the installation, the last week of August. So they'll get done. Just before school starts, I'll be a little juggling and Dawn and I had talked about how we're going to handle some of the. Uh, stuff that would normally happen in the gym, but, uh, we think we can work on it. Um, another item is summer cleaning group that's going to come before you. I appreciate your support there. Because of all the summer cleaning group, very difficult to clean our buildings. Uh, so we'll be setting up schedule, it's going to be a little different this year. We have a fairly young crew. Uh, a lot of kids, I call it aged out. They're getting to be sophomore, juniors and seniors in college and they're looking for their lifelong. Uh, job, uh, summer job. So we do have a quite, quite a few younger kids. Um, so we're, we're, uh, working on getting schedules, getting, so we have things done for these guys to come in and, uh. We're prepared for the referendum projects. Uh, been spending a lot of time preparing for that process, a lot of meetings, making decisions. Uh, sometimes head scratching things, but we're getting through them and we'll get a lot of things answered. These guys will present tonight on that. Last thing is, uh, this volume of proof, uh, us using socks for some snow removal. Um, it's something that we haven't done before and we use them on two occasions. Uh, the snowball was in excess of five inches and, um, they came in and, and removed the snowbars. It worked very well. One of the timing was, was a great timing snowball because it was. Snow on Friday night, Saturday and into Saturday night. We had all day Sunday to, to remove snow, snow was, uh. Probably the best snowfall you can have, the, the, you don't have the pressure of, of getting things done in an overnight. So that, that's worked well. Um, would like to probably continue that next year just because it has worked well and use them. Hope we don't use them anymore this year, but never know. So, uh, and that's all I got for, for an update for me. Do you have any questions?
I just knocked on wood for you.
Okay, beautiful. We like that. Thank you.
Um, just remind me within, um, the summer program, they have to be fourteen, correct?
What, what was that?
Age.
Yes, you hire a fourteen-year-old.
Okay.
Yes, yes, we do.
Okay. The sun doesn't come fourteen till June because I want to submit them.
It's not my favorite, it's not my favorite. Again, be, because of the fact that we're dealing with chemicals and we're dealing with just. Things and, and we want our students to be safe. Um, again, not my favorite thing to do. I actually have a file full of sixteen through nineteen-year-olds, but, um, yeah, we'll make it work.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
All right, item number six, we've guys have been very patient and haven't had any cake. We're on to our. We're on to our facilities project planning update. We've represented from Myron and P R A to present and review the current. Construction planning, bidding process, website recommendations, all that good stuff.
So if I, oh, so I can quick turn it over, um, Andre Lorenzen is already up at the podium. He also has Bridget Joyce from Myer, Myron, and then from P R A, we have Scott Justice and Tim Villa.
Thank you all for your patience here.
Well, thank you for having us. Can, uh, glad to be here with Myron and P R A. So give you a brief update and what we've been. Kind of accomplished and what we're doing and give you a kind of a schedule update, kind of where we're sitting on our activities. So I want to introduce the Myron team. Um, Bridget's here with us. She's going to be talking about communication. Uh, I again, I primarily work through pre-construction on this process, but, uh, Rebecca Christensen, she's been the one that's been, uh, at the forefront with all the budget estimates. And working with us, the P R A team and the district. Uh, Megan Prestaback, she was with us when we were doing the pre-referendum work with Bridget as well. And a couple of new faces that you probably haven't seen before, but Dakota Cole, she's going to be the project manager for these projects. So you'll see her around here more coming up this spring and in the summer. And Garrett Rhodey, he's going to be the project superintendent, kind of running all three projects with various around here. So it's a couple of new faces for you to see here. So if you can remember when we presented pre-referendum, we showed you this funnel and had the master planning arrow saying, we are here. Uh, now we've progressed all the way down to the bottom. We're in construction documents. So that means. All that hard work and the meetings with the faculty and the district, uh, kind of honing in on the scope and, and refining the drawings. Uh, we're right down here to the CDs and we're going to put this out to bid. So this is the next step before we actually hit that target for construction. So this is a milestone schedule that we used and worked, uh, with P R A on. It tracked all the iterations of the drawings for the projects through the process, but also tracked our budget updates. And so we can give that in a timely manner. So. A lot of these were hit, uh, right on time and we're, we're definitely on schedule. So a lot of cool tools that we use in pre-construction. This level one schedule again shows a different view and a different map of what the bidding looks like and the drawing iterations. Uh, and then kind of put some highlights and milestones. So you see at the bottom, I'm sure everybody, you know, wants to know what's the construction duration. So. You can see the three in the bottom, might be hard to read. Uh, it's, uh, central, I'm sorry, Lincoln, Central and then Rossman. Um, you do see some green that's far to the right. That's the generators. You know, the lead time on generators are about a year. So after we bid this. It's probably going to be one year before we actually put the generators in. So, uh, we'll see what you do any better, but I think that's just, we're going to plan for it right now. So again, like we did in our, uh, previous referendum projects, going to work with the district to find local participation. And get local contractors and people to participate in this project. Um, I think we're looking to go out with Central and Rossman here in a couple of weeks to put out to bid. So we'll work with, um. Doug and Adam and identify anybody that we want to use on this project and kind of get that encouragement. So definitely like to have district partners on, on your projects. So this is one thing too, when we go to competitively bid, this is a scope of bid sheet. So you can kind of see up there at the top says contract for masonry. What we want to do is we map out what we want those contractors to bid. Pretty specific, you know, just, uh. Referencing the drawings and specifications, but we want to make that, that roadmap for their success to bid it. So we don't have scope overlap. Or we have scope holes. So this is a great way that you'll see in the specifications. It's for each school that tells them exactly how we want them to bid it and what they should include. So it kind of works out really well. It's definitely informative. It's like doing your homework first. We want them to do their homework and read this specification, get better bids. With that, I'm going to turn over to Scott.
Curious, all right. I'm getting my new stack just a little principal, senior project manager, appointed race architects. Um, we are the design partner with Myron to deliver the, the referendum projects. Um, similarly, I'd like to share some of our day-to-day team members here that are really working diligently, dealt with together. Um, Devin, as you know, helped guide us through the referendum process. Um, I am going to help that is through the design and constructions process. And then as you see, we have Central Mills, um, our project architect, Tim Villar, who is here is our project specialist, who's doing a lot of the heavy lifting. And Megan Zeissman, um, she is our education planner and interior designer. Um, and I also like the rest of the team that we don't have on here, which is important as well, is our engineering consultants. We have electrical engineering, mechanical, plumbing, structural, civil, food service. All these different disciplines and engineering teams that we coordinate to get their systems integrated with our design. So that's part of the day-to-day process. That this team is working on. Process is going well, to my, my dad. So, um, as everyone's aware, the primary, primary scope is, um, E D A compliance. So we have everything from handrails to, um, door cleaners, the stall whist, the toilet crates and all that kind of stuff. That we're doing and right now we're tracking very well with the, um, maintenance list that we've put together as part of the process. Um, so what I'm going to do is I'm not going to bore everyone with that kind of stuff. I'm just going to highlight some of the feature design elements that we have. First starting with, um, Rossman. So as everyone's aware, if you look at the top right slide there, you know, there's the existing canopies that are at the front entrance and that back entrance. That are, that are seen, that have seen better days. You know, they're, they're on the way out, water drains through the combs, et cetera, et cetera. So those are being moved as part of this process. Um, what we are doing is we are putting a canopy back in front of the main entrance. So this is, I, I think this is, it's a nice, um, efficient and contemporary design that plays off the architecture of the building. You know, so it's going to do a good job. It's going to fight shelter in climate weather and, um. It, it actually enhances and identifies the entrance. So a nice, nice little add there. It's going to be a, a, a bit of a centerpiece for Ross. Um, we had a central, again in central, lots of A D A upgrades are going on, doors. Door cleaners, door whist, hardware, et cetera. But one of the, again, one of the feature design elements is going to be at the entrance. So the front doors there, if you look at the top left slide, those front doors need to be updated for A D A compliance as well. So if we step through those doors, you know, that whole vestibule starts to take on a, 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 um, refresh look. You know, so also then as part of that, you can make, you can see that we've enlarged that window. We've added a pass-through window, again, looking at the top left slide. And then we have our secure entrance there. So someone that's inside in the office area has the ability to monitor people from outside that first. Set of doors, then control access from inside the office through that secure entrance. Um, going to the next, the top center slide is kind of a peek into the office. So we'll just drop down to that bottom side, the larger one. You can see what we've done there is we've been able to take in some, integrate some branding elements. You know, from the school that I think really gives the space a nice touch. It gives it, it gives it a, a professional look, but still gives it a, a kind of a nice educational feel to it. And then we have some additional shots there for the, for the desk team and, and the finishes that are going to be provided in that space. Um, we, we get to Lincoln and I'm going to focus, uh, the focus on the exterior and then just touch a little bit on the music classroom. Music and art classrooms, excuse me. So if you look at that upper right slide, it's a little bit hard to tell, but the green outline that's around the building. Is the extent of the exterior renovation that we're doing. Um, that is, that, that in those areas, we have that brick that's grounded right to the C M U is failing and needs to be replaced. So, um, those areas, what I've done is I grabbed a couple screenshots of some of the modeling that we've done. And put that adjacent to the existing conditions just for comparison. So if you look at the top there, that's the entrance. And you can see what we're doing there, excuse me. Then that entire facade is going to be replaced. It's going to be a replaid. There's going to be the, um, an airspace, um, rigid insulation. And then you break on there. So the wall's going to perform better. It's going to be, um, better from mechanic, for a mechanical standpoint. But also gives us opportunity to enhance the aesthetic. So what we're doing is we're, we're bringing in the brick and we're thinking about what can we do with the brick. You know, obviously we want to remain consistent. Cause there's a good portion of the building that's not being done. You know, so again, we're sticking with that same color, but again, we want to. Um, enhance and identify the entrance. So that's where we're integrating the, um, the blue brick. So right there, where you see the logo, that stuff is going to be, that brick is going to be rotated vertically. So that's what's called a soldier course. So it's going to be a little bit different than the, than the regular horizontal bomb that you see off the left and the rest of the building to get, you know, draw attention to that entrance. And what we've done is we've taken that blue brick and added some accent along that, 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 um, that facade there. Then if you go way to the left there, you can see those existing windows. So that's going to be the blue brick beneath them, then yellow, yellow. Blue metal panel above it. Again, to keep with that existing blue that is integrated throughout the entire, as you see building. Um, as we come down to that next one, that's just a quick shot, that's the fourth and fifth grade wing there. So you can see what those windows are looking like there with that. Old beigeish metal panel. Again, that needs to be mediated, that wall system there and with that color, it's creating the brick, we're providing a, a reveal in there. So it's a subtle reveal, you know, it's not something obtuse, intrusive, you know, but it's going to create a nice shadow line. And then we're bringing in the, 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 the same, um, brick down below the windows and the metal panel above the. And off to the, um, the kitchen side of the kitchen and the gym. So you can see that, again, the left side of this, um, slide. Um, there is the existing condition down there, the metal pitcher. You can see the, 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 um, box truck is there that makes deliveries that is exterior. Who are there? So part of the scope of this project is getting quite an addition there. So we are, we are moving that, that freezer inside, you know, we're creating a space for new walk-in freezer and walk-in, um, refrigerator. And then we're, we're providing the addition that you see there in the upper slide. Um, we're kind of picking up that canopy line of the bottom of those windows and again following through with the same brick and that blue detail to. Tie everything together. Um, then just moving to the, to the right, um, what you see there is a kind of combine both those images, the top right and the lower right. Um, so what we have is the music classroom. These, these are actually the old locker rooms. Okay, we're, 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 the floor is all cut up and there's really nothing in there right now. What we're doing is we're, we're taking this, we're thoughtfully. I'm designing it for a music classroom and an art classroom on the other side. So what you see is, is, is new finishes, new casework, new ceiling, new L E D lighting. And, and the round circles that you're seeing there are actually, they're, they're called solid tubes. So what they do is they bring a natural light to. So that's not, that's not intended to play, although it looks like in these images. Um, and then you come down to the lower right, again, that's, that's part of the, um, the art classrooms. So we provide additional sinks in there with solid surface at the far right. You can see again accessible access for the sinks and then the lower left are. Um, just two other shots from within those classrooms. Um, we are, there is additional scope in the building, but we don't have that right now, like the special in class. Space for room space as well. Um, things are moving well. And with that, I'll turn it back over to.
Funny, Bridget Joyce is my other department. Um, familiar faces, great to see you all again. But just wanted to pop in and say congratulations again on passing the referendum and to update you a little bit on working on communications and the things. So it's been a little quiet in short. The road's kind of, you know, excited to hear what's going on in the referendum. Um, there is information coming. So we have first and foremost updated our referendum logos that we're in and have created. Through the entire referendum information process. We're going to carry that through now through the design and construction process. So that people are still recognizing in the community that we're still talking about the design and construction process, the referendum projects. Um, and they're aware that this information is relative to our, the passage of our referendum. Um, so that one is there on the screen right under the communications title, um, essentially the same rating that's changed to five. The Hartford joint one logo. Um, to your right, you're seeing a large image, which is actually the first draft of our project updates. So these will be coming out probably quarterly, um, sometimes, you know, monthly as we're really going through the, the stronger phases of construction. And we can, we're simply as a P E F version that will maybe post to the website just for community members who are really interested in learning more. Um, and it's also something that, um, Dr. Vee Leos can share with district bill or the building professionals, maybe share with your staff so that they're knowing what's going on. Um, but it's just an electronic print deliverable that I'll create for you guys that just kind of keeps everybody in the loop on what's going on in construction wise. So look for those coming soon. Um, actually, uh, Dr. Vee Leos has some copies of our first version, so those will be. So look for those coming soon. Um, actually, uh, Dr. Vee Leos has some copies of our first version, so those will be shared after, after this board meeting. Um, which is pretty exciting. And then throughout, um, the construction process, as you see the bullet points up there, we'll continue to engage with your community members, your staff, your students. Um, so we find big ways to integrate the construction process into your classroom. So as Garrett, Romy and the rest of our project team are going into construction, they'll start talking to your building principals a little bit as to how we can integrate and use the lessons that are going on as a live construction site with your kiddos. Uh, and maybe teach them lessons or show them things that are kind of fun to, to learn as, as they're seeing a lot of people in construction passing it on. So. Um, yeah, that's kind of it. Other than that, we will also be working on some community milestones, so groundbreaking, certifications, that kind of thing. So I'll work with our core team on that. Um, those will be all coming soon. But yeah, just know that we're here, we're communicating and we'll continue to engage those stakeholders throughout the interior process. Actually, a lot of communications. And that's actually our last slide. So are there any other questions at all that you guys have? Otherwise, thank you very much for having us and letting us update you on what's going on.
I just have one question on Lincoln, on the fourth and fifth grade wing. With that metal and everything that's being protected, is it because I know we're not changing the grading, right? Because the big issue is the water pools there. And we're not, obviously we're not demolishing fourth and fifth grade wing like we wanted. So is that going to help with the metal on the roof and everything to try and allow not so much retention on that side?
We'll be doing a little bit of grading. We're going to have in foundations and supporting the bricks. So we'll be touching that a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, it's going to be excavated out. There's going to be a holder that goes down five feet and a brick ledge put in and then the hindrance point is it's going to be recreated when that fills with bad, yeah. So there will be time to change later in the build.
Perfect. Thank you.
The, the blue line on the top, what you see there in the bottom left picture. I mean, one of the reasons why we have the problem that we have is that, um, that kind of metal cap and flashing hasn't worked so well. And as water gets again, in between the brick layer and the concrete block layer, that's where we're finding a bunch of this problem. So again, as that gets remediated, that, that, that top kind of cap thing will be remedi- remediated as well. So again, trying to keep the water out
Right.
from the spots it's not supposed to be.
Thank you.
It looks great. Yeah, it's exciting to see the pictures.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Now you can have cake. Take it to our family, friends.
Without cake.
Yeah. Take one for each child. Thank you very much. Nice to meet you. Okay, that brings us to the action items of our meeting tonight. So actually, number one, board member appointment of treasurer. The board needs to fill this officer role. Ed was serving as treasurer. And now we need to replace that. We can't go without treasurer. So I'm looking for a nomination. Running treasurer.
I'll nominate Barb Lindert for the office of treasurer.
Are there any other nominations? I do have to ask this question three times. Are there any other nominations? And are there any other nominations? Is there a motion, uh, is there a motion?
First, do you accept?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Barb. And then I need a motion. Two of, it says right here.
Yep, I will motion to close nominations for treasurer of the Board of Education and cast a unanimous ballot for Barb Lindert with the ministerial duties of treasurer delegated to the business services director.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Barb, thank you. Appreciate it. Item number two. Um, we need to appoint a new clerk duty. We need to reappoint the clerk duties for the twenty twenty five election. So with Ms. Shunk, our current clerk on the ballot, another board member should be assigned to clerk duties for the April election. So is there a motion?
I make a motion to nominate Barb Lindert for the clerk duties for the, um, of April election.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second, all in favor? How far, you don't have to, you accept this. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion calls. Thank you again, Barb. Item number three is policy revisions. Twenty-two sixty-four nondiscrimination on the basis of sex and education programs or activities, which we would like to rescind. And then item or number twenty-two sixty-six nondiscrimination on the basis of sex and education programs or activities is what we would put in place. Uh, the policies are updated currently to be compliant with the call, with the law. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve policy revisions for twenty-two sixty-four nondiscrimination on the basis of sex and education programs for activities, rescind. And twenty-two sixty-six nondiscrimination on the basis of sex and education programs for activities.
Do we have a second?
No, good.
Any discussion? Thank you, Don.
I just want to reiterate one more time that twenty-two sixty-four was the policy that was adopted in July of twenty twenty-four. And now based on the executive order and the dear colleague letter, I am recommending that the board rescind this policy and put back into place policy twenty-two sixty-six. Um, with the caveat that that policy be revised to eliminate the statement regarding August first and July thirty-first.
Any other discussion?
Well, I know that, uh, it's the dates here that we're talking about, but I did want to just bring up here about, um, under introduction here. Board does not discriminate on the basis of sex, including sexual orientation or gender identity, which I, which I did want to get rid of, but seeing as I was outvoted, I just wanted to say that, um, I think it, it is, it's parents and us should support, uh, students who don't are, what, what, what's the word that I want? That aren't under this gender identity category. Somebody have, this Tara says that she's, uh, obligated to protect them, but I think that we are obligated to protect the other students too. And according to the Wisconsin Liberty, Wisconsin Institute for Law and Liberty, they have many gray areas. This is many moving parts. So, um, that, that's just what I, that was my comment.
Appreciate you sharing the comments about it. Um, any other comments?
If I can state, and I don't recall if I said this, um, when we did our pre-meeting. Uh, we have had Title IX cases under our previous policy. However, since the new policy was adopted back in July, we've had zero Title IX um, complaints filed. So this is hopefully a trend that will continue where you know, we, it's not something that our district has to deal with, um, but when we do, we certainly will. So I, I know that, um, I wanted to make sure people know that this is not something that's called upon frequently.
With that. Yes, sorry. I just was. Um, then I'll take all in favor.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four is the custodial services contract for twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-seven. A partnership with task has provided part-time custodial services for the district since twenty fifteen. This has been successfully and drastically reduced time and money spent on recruiting, training and employing part-time custodians. Task pays the salaries, benefits and uniform costs. This contract does include an eight percent increase in the hourly rate for twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. Um, is there a motion?
I motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-seven custodial contract services with task.
Second. Any discussion?
Friendly amendment. Um, are you comfortable twenty-five, twenty-six? Oh, I'm sorry.
If you're. Twenty-five through twenty-seven.
But I do have a question about that because it says it's an eight percent increase and there were two different, there is an increase for twenty-five, twenty-six, and then there is an increase in the contract for twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Correct.
Is the eight percent between now and twenty-seven, or is it eight percent this first year and then an additional percentage the next year?
Eight for both. She just, eh, in the note, in this commentary, they pointed out the first year, this current year that's coming up, just to point that out to you. But yes, both years have an eight percent increase.
So it's sixteen percent total.
Correct. I mean, keep in mind that again, part of that component is going to be salary increase, but there's also benefit increase. And as you know, if with our, our operations and us dealing with benefits and that five to ten percent is considered a good increase in terms of health insurance. Uh, the alternative is again, bring these, bring these employees onto the district, paying W R S, paying our health insurance, um, staffing it, supervising it. So, um, again, even at the, even at the rates of pay that you're talking about in terms of the these, um, contracting employees, I think it saves us a lot of time and a lot of headache in the long run.
I, I, I know you're the expert on this, so I just have one other question.
Sure.
Um, just to make me feel a little more comfortable. Even with our current new insurance plan that you did, where we're safe, we're not in that common percent increase for insurance plans, do you still think that after twenty-seven, if they continue on this road of eight percent increases every year? Is there a point at which it would be worthwhile or reevaluated, bringing those employees?
Yeah, I mean, we did, I talked to Tony, um, quite a bit. Uh, Doug talks to, um, Mr. Good enough also quite a bit during the year between, um, kind of staffing needs that we have during the year. For example, we have a task person on at Lincoln during the daytime right now. Um, because of the timing where, um, the previous employee, um, resigned in January and trying to find somebody that would be qualified in things. Um, task was able to bring somebody in. I think it's a good opportunity to see what that person provides in terms of service. We've been happy with, um, that. I wouldn't normally necessarily suggest long-term that our daytime custodian staff is staffed that way. But, um, A, it buys us time from, from a situation that was somewhat unexpected in terms of her quitting. Um, and gives us some time to kind of work through a good candidate. Um, I'll be honest, I, I would look at the potential task person as potentially, if they're interested in coming here, they pointed out that they do have interest in potentially working directly for the district. That's something that obviously Tony from task and I am going to have to hammer out. I don't want to be seen as poaching his employees.
Yeah.
At the same time, if we put, make a posting and he likes it here and has gotten used to the work and wants to work here as an internal employee, I mean, we'd give him that opportunity, just like, he'll have to apply, of course. And we'll go through the application process, but you know, that would be one fix to that. So again, we talk about what wages are doing. They provide, um, s- staffing and custodial services for Slinger. They, they do services for Hartford Union. Um, and so we're, they have probably about ten districts they're doing work with. And the fact that matters, especially in our instance with nighttime custodians, um, people want to work during the day. So even in our old handbook or our current handbook, if we were going to hire those positions for nighttime, we're going to pay a premium to have them come here because nobody wants to work the second shift.
And I do appreciate that. They, they've been contracting with us for some time and they've done a, a good job. Um, I was just curious that with the changes we've made to help save the district money, if at some point it's would we have to reevaluate? Not at this time.
And I, I think what Mr. Majeris would summarize would be that we were always continuing to reevaluate our relationships and our partnerships with vendors and with other on people who provide services so that we can continue to be fiercely responsible.
Yeah.
The good thing is that task only cleans on school days. So again, they're not cleaning on other days where our full-time custodians, again, are two hundred and sixty day employees. They're doing lots of other cleaning and things that we need done, um, summer projects and things like that. But i- in their specific instance, when the work is done, they're done. And that's another thing we don't have to deal with. So and we're paying for a hundred and seventy-five days worth of cleaning instead of two hundred and sixty days worth of staffing. And again, finding things for them to do and the costs related to having them as full-time employees. So again, at their, let's just save thirty dollars an hour for argument's sake. Again, it's, it's costing us forty-five thousand for a person perhaps versus I paying wages anywhere from the high teens to the mid twenties. And then again, family insurance, almost thirty thousand dollars when you take the, the whole kind of situation into account, you got W R S, you got payroll taxes. So you got an eighty thousand dollar person before you blink.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or discussion? Uh, roll call vote, please.
Barb.
Aye.
Erin.
Aye.
Don.
Aye.
I say aye.
Motion carries. Item number five is the summer recruit hire positions for twenty twenty-five. Seasonal workers are hired annually to help with cleaning, painting, landscaping, remodeling and clerical work. A substantial amount of this basic work is completed during the summer and saves the district tremendous dollars, given the summer rate of pay versus paying overtime towards staff. Um, is there a motion?
I motion to approve the twenty twenty-five summer work crew hires.
A second.
Any discussion? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Barb.
Aye.
Erin.
Aye.
Don. And I say aye.
Motion carries. Item number six, Chromebook purchases for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The district purchase, purchases student Chromebooks every year for sixth grade students that are used throughout their middle school career. This is a separate action item in the full technology package, which will be coming in the March meeting to lock in pricing. The cost of three hundred and three dollars per unit includes the device, a four-year protection plan, unlimited damage claims, theft, loss, replacement, charger, warranty and replacement program, required Google license and inventory management perks. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a hundred and seventy-six Chromebooks at a cost not to exceed fifty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
I just have one. Anna, I talked about this, um, last week, just we were in a school thing and I just had a question about the Chromebooks. I know that there are some kids that obviously have accidental issues, but then there are some that are a little bit, um, consistent in their damage to Chromebooks. When you say four-year protection plan and unlimited claims, like, really? I mean, like they could destroy it ten times and the company will cover. I mean, there's got to be some, some cutoff on this. I'm just curious.
Yeah. So the way the, the way the protection plans work, again, there, there's going to be n- normal wear and tear of certain things that happen. Um, again, uh, we're able to do s- some work. Um, you know, if a key pops off, we can put the keys back on. I, I wouldn't say that it, it, we've had instances where students peel a bunch of keys off and we'll send the machine in and have them replace that. If they break a screen, for example, again, we've seen lots of screens get broken for a lot of different reasons. Um, again, we do have protection coverage to some degree if it's deemed to be normal wear and tear. So Mr. Radzlog and his staff are, are trained in terms of what they would consider to be normal wear and tear. And part of it is the talking through this, with the students and administration, try to figure out what happened in the particular instance. And so again, in situations where it is normal kind of stuff that just accidentally happens, that those get covered. Again, the things that we experience are, there is intentional damage going on as well. And how do we deal with that scenario? So, um, yeah, people, people do have to reimburse the district if it's a situation where it's intentional damage. It's not covered by warranty.
I would just say kudos to having us vote on this at this meeting to get this cost savings because it is a substantial savings even compared to last year.
Yeah, I mean, one, one of the things where the provider is particularly worried about, um, again, with things happening, uh, outside of our control in terms of, um, legislation and governance, um, dealing with tariffs and things, they are very concerned that their inventory that they currently have is going to get sold out. The new shipment's going to have tariffs on them and you'll get the newer model, but you'll also get the associated costs with it. So they have, um, when Mr. Radzlog called, they have eleven thousand units in stock. Um, but this is the time of year, if you saw the high schools meeting last night, that they approved their purchase of Chromebooks too. I don't know what vendor they use. But again, everybody's starting to plan ahead for that summertime. And so we do like this company that Ryan's found. Um, again, those inventory perks, they'll label them for us. They'll label the chargers for us. So it saves us a lot of time to having to touch all these machines. They'll bulk, uh, package them. So when we take them out, they're kind of ready to go versus us having to unbox a hundred and seventy- unbox a hundred and seventy-six individual boxes and have the garbage and fool around. So um yeah, it's it's pretty slick, actually.
Do these include the cases too that the kids get, or is that separate?
The cases would normally be separate. We actually have a supply of cases right now. So you're not approving a case purchase right now because we have some.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Barb.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Don.
Aye.
I say aye.
Motion carries. Item number seven is the photography contract for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The recommendation is to contract with school and sports picks for photography in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The contract has no cost to the district. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the photography contract from school and sports picks.
Thank you.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes approval of minutes, bills, treasurer's report and personnel recommendations. Is there any request to pull an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Uh can I roll a couple, please?
Mm-hmm. Barb.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Don.
Aye.
I say aye.
Motion carries. Item number nine is the board meeting reflection and feedback. So there was feedback from the last meeting included in the board packet. And I would have thought of us to fill out the feedback form from tonight. And with that, would I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
So Don seconded because he said motion at the same time as Barb. So Barb and Don. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Adjourned at seven thirty-one.